American Medical Matters, Adam Sanchin, Chair of Sports and Politics, for that. God willing, you're in the state of Tennessee, Monroe County.
Commissioner Miller, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, pray. Heavenly Father, as we come before the throne of grace this evening, let's thank you, Father God, for this wonderful day, that you've given us another day of life, with a many, many blessings, God, who rest over us. We certainly thank you, God, for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We pray, God, to this lot over us, but continue, Lord, to bless our county, Father, and help us, Lord, to make the right decisions here, as we look to you, Father. Forgive us, Lord, for we have been duped, didn't we?
Commissioner Reynolds, would you lead us in the pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Here.
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 Present.
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 Thank you. We'll now have nominations for Protem, Chairman Protem.
I nominate Brian Harold.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I just put those... Who did nominate him?
He nominated Travis.
He nominated Travis.
William Cross did.
Okay.
Does it require a second?
It shouldn't require.
I'll second Travis.
Dominique, you.
Dominique, you.
Dominique, you.
Dominique, you.
Dominique, you.
Dominique, you.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll have row call on Travis Wade.
William Cross.
No.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Aye.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
And do we have a...
What'd you hear about...
He's got it.
We've got it, yeah.
No, he knows.
Okay. So now Travis will move, and we'll have the chairman nomination and appointment.
Does he take my seat?
Yes.
Oh.
For the nominee.
Let me get you out. So we're doing...
Nomination.
Nomination for chair. Yeah. Do we have a nomination for chair? Ah. Ah. Anyone else?
Okay, and the... Row call.
Row call.
Big nomination, cease.
Yes.
Yeah. Nomination, cease.
Nomination, cease. Go ahead and row call, please.
Yeah.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah. Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Stand.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Ah.
Hey, Brad Wilson, glad to chat. Congratulations, bud. Brad Wilson, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Now we can all move, right? He's gotta go there, but Adam comes here, and you do better. Always hate to see you move fast. I was warm now, you're good.
All right. Next on the agenda is 0923-1, Commission Minutes from August. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Roger Thomas.
Aye.
Second, Craig Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is applicants for notary public. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Take it.
David Winters, second, Travis Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is trustees' monthly reports, trial balance. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roger Thomas.
Second.
Second, William Cross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Resolution 0923-4. This is Monroe County Finance and her trial balance. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Brian Harold and Travis Wade. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Aye.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sal.
Aye.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Resolution... Well, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay.
Just at the end, not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, thank you. Resolution 0923-6, a resolution authorizing a multi-year lease purchase and maintenance agreement for the Monroe County Health Department. This will be more than 60 months, and the payment will remain at $165 per month. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas, second, Brian Harold. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number 0923-6A is a resolution for the following amendment for the Health Department budget and Monroe County General Fund for the fiscal year 2526 to amend the Health Department grant received from the state. This is in the amount of $31,636.79. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
David Winters.
Second.
Brian Harold, second. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number 0923-6B. This is a resolution for the following amendment for the Monroe County Technology Department being made in the General Fund budget for the fiscal year 2526 to move money from the communications line and give raises to two employees. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
DJ?
Second, with a lot of discussion.
Okay, Danny?
With a lot of discussion.
Everhart, second, discussion.
Go ahead, DJ.
Who's first?
Uh, I... My... Mine's more comment, really, just for the board. Again, I want to remind you all of fiscal budget time. We went over salaries, we had a lot of hard decisions to make, and we gave some, didn't give some, we got across the board, and we argued back and forth about that. But again, we talked about no midterm or mid-contract increases or raises. That's not to say anything about our IT department. I think they're absolutely top-notch and fantastic, and I wish, on the face of it, I could... I could open the gate here, but I really, from my standpoint, can't, and I wanted to speak publicly in front of you and let you know why. Because if I opened that gate for you, then I've already had five other employees ask about why they weren't considered this year. And we as a board said we weren't going to do that, and I'm going to stick to that commitment I made to the board, so that's my comment, Mr. Chair.
He said it all.
Okay. Any other comments? Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
No.
Brian Harold.
No.
Craig Miller.
No.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sal.
No.
Paul Exson.
No.
Roger Thomas.
No.
Travis Wade.
No.
David Winters.
No.
Thank you. Resolution number 0923-6C. This is a resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to enter into a contract with City Tailpoint Company Incorporated for correctional communication services. And they're requesting permission to sign the Correctional Communication Services Agreement with City Tailpoint Company to provide video visitation and inmate telecommunication services at the Monroe County Justice Center. And the agreement is not to extend over a period of more than 60 months with an additional 20 months option. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Adam Reynolds?
Second question.
Second, DJ Saler.
My question would be to the fact that, or is this... Am I understanding this correctly? That we're going to be remitting 70% of these funds?
Yeah, I was... Chief, could you... Chief.
Yes, that's the same contract we've had for several years now. When we bid it out, we had four or five companies, this is the best deal. I'm looking at all of them. The 30, 35% that we bring in, having an average of $115, $1,000 on a month. So a whole lot better than we've ever done.
But we are to get paid 70% of this of these funds?
I thought it was 30.
Okay, so I'm... I'm... I'm off, sorry.
Any other questions?
Under our obligation, so we got to allow space, equipment, this and that, signing hours, all that's in place, there's no additional cost down the road.
Everything's already there with the contract.
And the hours, the hours they're allowed to use the phone, that's already in place in the... Okay.
This is basically a new rule.
Okay.
Brian, it's... It's 70% on the calling cards.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, and then 35% on the usage that we're...
Yeah.
Any other questions? Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number 0923-6D. This is a resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to submit an application to the Tennessee Corrections Institute for Training Equipment, and this would be 100% of the cost up to $15,000 of equipment. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved. Approved.
Stated.
Okay. Craig Miller, motion, and Travis Wade, second. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
Thank you. Resolution number 0923-6E. The following amendment is a request to be made in the Monroe County Sheriff's Department budget for the fiscal year 2526 budgeting the fatality reduction grant previously approved by the commission, and this is in the amount of $49,120.
So moved.
DJ Saler, second. Adam Reynolds. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number 0923-6F. The following amendment for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department is requested to be made in the General Fund budget for the fiscal year 2526. This is to move money from the reserve lines into the current budget to use. It's in the amount of $115,735.63. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, Danny?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I know it says from a line, but this is from their reserve, not our reserve, correct? This has nothing to do with our reserve, this is his reserve that he's already got. Okay, just want to hear that.
Already in his budget.
Just want to hear that.
One of the transfer lines is insurance. It's coming for $56,962, down $20,000. Why... Why do we have $20,000 left over in the insurance claim?
Well, we have... Yeah. It's a lot of time before we add an insurance claim or something that we fix ourselves.
Okay.
Or something we didn't fix.
Okay. So it's not health insurance or any of those? It's not building insurance or those? We didn't overestimate on any of those?
Vehicle.
It's vehicle, okay. Thank you, so moved.
Any other questions? Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
Next is Resolution 0923-6G. This is an amendment to be made in the Monroe County Sheriff's Department budget for the fiscal year 2526 budgeting the medical transport grant. It's in the amount of $48,215. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
DJ Saler. William Cross. Row call.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Next is Resolution 0923-6H. A resolution to declare several sheriff vehicles and military equipment as surplus property and place these items for sale on GovDeals. And you have a list of the equipment attached to that. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Danny, second, Travis Wade. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
DJ Sal.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Resolution number 0923-6I. A resolution to grant approval from Monroe County Tourism Department to submit an application to the Tennessee Sounds Perfect Agency. This is a 90% grant for a total cost up to $100,000. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Roger Thomas, second, DJ Saler.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Was this other $10,000, where would that come from? Out of Virginia? It would come out of Harboretum. It would come out of Harboretum?
And it's looking, we rebudgeted and scaled back this year, but it's looking like it'll probably be close to $3,000.
Okay, that sounds big enough. Then I just have one question. On the grant application, so will it add to Monroe County's insurance expense? And it says yes. I just want to know about insurance and our liability for having kayaks out there.
Yes, so, okay, so to kind of explain better, I'm not going to say that we just came up with this idea, we researched other states, Missouri, Oklahoma, Arkansas, to have this going, I kind of knew what those are serial. It's going to be a walk-up kiosk, so think like an ATM, kind of, you're going to have to go, swipe your card to rent this kayak. On there, there's liability waivers where they take personal liability. The insurance, when I had Charlotte fill this out, she asked me if that would add to insurance expenses. Obviously, this machine's like $12,000, so that's going to have to go on somebody's inventory, so it adds to their personal property. So that would want to be insured on that, case a lot, and hit it near the lake or something. So that's what we meant by not signing it up. If they sign waivers that take the personal liability, if they go out or doing something crazy on the lake, that's all meant, because they have to sign some forms to put it in, release that locker door to that kayak to them, if that makes sense.
Fantastic.
Where's it actually being stationed?
So when we originally requested the full amount, we were thinking multiple locations across the county. Digging deeper, we are going to start with one location, and maybe in future years, kind of develop that in other cities. But right now, we're working with TBA and City of Bonore to put it at their new pack launch right there across from Parkview City Hall.
Fantastic.
So they already have the launch pack out there. TBA's working with this, because it's technically TBA property, so that was another insurance thing, you know, putting your stuff property on somebody's, your personal property on somebody's actual land and stuff like that would kind of be a situation, but we've been working through that with them. But it'll be right there at the lake, already on the launch pad, so it'd be easy access, handicap accessible, all that kind of stuff right there.
Great idea. Thank your staff and tourism for doing great work. Before we go.
Any other comments, questions? Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Aye.
Resolution number 0923-6J. A resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County Archives Department to submit an application to the Tennessee America 250 Project and Community Support. This will be 100% grant, up to $20,000 for equipment. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion.
Roger Thomas, David Winters, second. Row call, please.
William Cross.
Ah.
Danny Erich.
Ah.
Brian Harold.
Ah.
Craig Miller.
Ah.
Adam Renn.
Aye.
DJ Saler.
Ah.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Thomas.
Ah.
Travis Wade.
Ah.
David Winters.
Good job, Brian.
Great job.
That's good. Congratulations. Resolution number 0923-6K. A resolution to grant approval for the Monroe County EMA Department to submit an application to the Tennessee Risk Management Safety Grant Program, and the grant will be 100% of the total cost up to $20,000, and it's for traffic vests and traffic phones.
So moved.
DJ Saler, second. Travis Wade. Any discussion? Row call, please. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Uh.
Danny Erving-Hart.
Uh.
Brian Harrow.
Uh.
Craig Miller.
Uh.
Adam Reddick.
Right.
D.J. Siler.
Uh.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Collins.
Uh.
Travis Wade.
Uh.
David Winter.
Aye. Good job. Next is Monroe County's Board of Education, resolution number seven. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Roger Thomas.
Second.
Second, Craig Miller. Roll call, please.
William Cross.
Uh.
Danny Erving-Hart.
Uh.
Brian Harrow.
Uh.
Craig Miller.
Right.
Adam Reddick.
Right.
D.J. Siler.
Right.
Paul Exson.
Aye.
Roger Collins.
Uh.
Travis Wade.
Uh.
David Winter.
Aye. Next is oh-nine-two-three-dash-eight. Thomas McCosh from Monroe County Airport.
That would like this be a handle for him. Come on, bro, give this to him, please. We had a meeting this morning in Maryville with Phil Sidney, and the meeting this morning was on the aviation rollout for their A and P program. Extremely good, uh, our mayor represented Monroe County in a marvelous way, they acknowledged him, Mayor Jacobs, and, uh, it's a program that's gonna help our children in a fabulous way, but I just wanted to mention that. Uh, this gentleman right here is trying to help us find a way to get solar at the airport that would produce our own solar, so we don't have an electric bill. Take about eighteen hundred dollars off of us a month, plus we would make a little bit more on top of that, and I'm gonna turn it over to him if that's okay with you guys. I'll step that away.
You don't wanna stay up here, Tom?
In your name, sir.
I've got you right here, uh. Thank you to the county commission for allowing me to present here, my name is James Flair, I work for a company named Verge, we're an energy services company. Uh, we're expert in generating revenue for city, county government, and the airports specifically. So this past spring, I met this fine young man at Tennessee Aviation Association Conference. It was there, we began kind of idea sharing about what Monroe County Airport could become. Now, working with several airports in Tennessee, by the way. So over these past few months, under Tom's guidance, we developed a business case based on how the airport operates that he shares with me, and kind of the vision of where he wants it to go, and then I shared with him best practices that we've learned, working with, you know, regional large airports around the country. Okay, to create a plan to unleash growth at your airport. But first, we have to define what the problem is, okay, that's a, that's a boundary to growth. Okay, one is parking. But parking airports can be lucrative if you choose it to be. So, with Tom, I'd like to ask you, Tom, how large is your waitlist for people who'd like to park?
We're in excess of two hundred again.
Okay, yeah, thank you, two hundred, that's probably the highest I've heard, I've been to twenty-two airports in Tennessee, the average is about forty. So it's incredible, if you build it, they will come, if you remember the movie.
They have no open spaces.
Yeah, it, nowhere. So just think, every plane that parks here, revenue, okay. Number two, to add to that, fuel revenue. If you park here, you buy fuel here, okay, that's number two. Three, rising cost of energy. You mentioned solar, that is a component of this. I'm using solar to make this project fantastic from a financial perspective, it's not the primary driver. Solar gets you access to, uh, the IRA bill that passed in twenty-twenty-two, which presents a, a lot of money, up to fifty percent of projects paid for through that. We designed this particular project that way. Regarding rising cost of energy, did everybody get to hear about the wonderful, uh, what TBA just announced for all of us here in Tennessee? The largest in the nation, twelve percent, one-year increase? That's on top of the nine-point-seventy-five that we got in twenty-three and twenty-four. Folks, we're twenty, over twenty percent increase in two and a half years. This isn't slowing down, uh, our, our strain for energy is just going up, and a lot of it's caused AI and alternate coins. Again, it doesn't matter what you believe or what you like, it's here, there's not a thing we can do about it. And the hard part is, is even though we need more power plants, it's different than it was sixty years ago, 'cause nobody wants to live beside of a power plant. There's a challenge, so now we're into microbrews, so, so those are our options. Number four is something that you may not have thought about, uh, but it's something that we see clearly, and that's electrical infrastructure. Uh, when your old airport was built, that was a farm, and if you drive out there, it still kinda looks like it right, right? Well, when power was served to it, they treated it like a house, not uncommon, there's like seventy-four airports here in Tennessee. Uh, probably half of the regional airports like yours is served by a, a common household type transformer. Now, what that, what does that mean to you? If you want to promote economic growth here, industrial park, think that, or you wanna attract companies to come and build, 'cause you have fifty-six acres, or if you acquire more, you don't have the power for it, you don't have the ability to sell any energy, plus the substation is a mile away. We address that in this project. So let's talk about the solution on these four things. So, uh, working with the local utility will bring three-phase power to the airport. Second, we're gonna design and install a thirty-five-port shade structure that is also solar generation. Parking structure for airplanes, thirty-five new revenue generating parking spots. These parking spots, while people who park their planes there, they're covered with solar panels that generate energy, that kill his power bill, and he's gonna generate so much energy that he's gonna sell it back to the grid. So more money-making. So what does it cost for the mere small price of five million dollars, right? So what does it really deliver? Thirty-five new planes, I'm gonna talk about this in terms of a twenty-five-year plan. And the reason is, is solar panels are amazing today, they're extremely light, extremely resilient. Uh, right now, the production guarantees are, are actually just beyond twenty-five years, meaning that's when they just start to degrade. Meaning instead of a hundred percent production, maybe in year twenty-seven, it's now ninety-eight percent, but it just, it just stopped. The idea is, I'm speaking of this in twenty-five-year terms. So thirty-five new planes will get you, and I'm not gonna include escalation. As you know, prices are gonna go up, he's never gonna keep it at a hundred and fifty dollars a month, of course not. Fuel's gonna change, all these things change, but let's say it doesn't. One point six million dollars in new revenue over that period of time. More planes, more fuel sales. We have the data, we have worked with over sixty airports doing this, it's gonna generate one point nine million in fuel cell revenue. Utility spend, between his utility savings, he's gonna gain by basically not paying power bills anymore, and having credit to the grid, and what he sells back, he's gonna generate another nine hundred thousand in revenue. So let me summarize for you. Five million dollar project generating four point three million of new revenue over that period of time. Now let's get back to the grant. Everybody has heard about the IRA bill, maybe you have, maybe you haven't, twenty-twenty-two, and it contained, uh, they tried to encourage people to invest in geothermal and solar energy, right? Okay, has everybody heard about the one big beautiful bill? It just passed, okay. So that bill kinda counteracts the other one. And that's okay, 'cause I get it, the idea is, is if it's so good, why does it need subsidized, right? I agree with you. But if I told you there's a bucket of money sitting here, and there's two and a half million dollars in it from Monroe County, do you want it? Yes or no? It's that simple. So we designed this project that I wrapped in the necessity of adding three-phase power to bring it to the airport, install the solar structure, give you the ability to park thirty-five more planes, and with that, we get you the IRA tax grant and get fifty percent of this project paid for. You now have a two and a half million dollar project that's generating four point three million dollars during this period of time. This is incredible. You don't see this very often. Uh, I will say there's a run on this right now. As you can imagine, we have a number of airports that we're working with already trying to get in kind of before it sunsets. It officially sunsets in July. We have a little caveat, I have a letter of intent here that I'll give Mayor Ingram, and it's just our letter of intent. Our next step is, we need to actually develop, put dot, uh, dot the i's, cross the t's, on what the thing actually costs. I'm talking to you in terms of the budget. We developed a business case of what you can save, what money it would cost. My reality is, I think the project will cost less than five million. Uh, one million of this job is to try to bring power to your airport that's over a mile away. Your power company may give you plenty of subsidy, they may even do it for free. We don't know that until we get deep into that next stage. So.
You have thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Five minutes.
All right. So that's it, our ask is, sign the letter of intent so we can put you in a position to quote another airport manager, so you can print money. 'Cause it's never going to end, once you have this infrastructure, you own it, Monroe County owns it.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Thank you very much.
Uh, can I give you guys the pass for our agreement?
Yes, please do.
'Cause I'd love to, at a workshop, possibility, to let you know what some of the details are. Oh, that goes, yes, long-term.
Thank you so much.
If you wanna see what it looks like, we've got a page set up.
If you got such a good deal, why don't you install, we pay what we pay, you know? It's such a good deal.
It works for free, I'd love to do that. I still have, we have, the federal government, there's so many rules on things, it's like, well, you do this, then we'll reimburse you and.
Okay, next is.
Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanna, Tom, I, I just wanna recognize, Tom, and, um, a couple of weeks ago, the airport hosted one of the largest events in Monroe County, especially on Monroe County property, the Balloon Festival with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, that was the twelfth year of the Balloon Festival, and, uh, Tom and his staff did an outstanding job over, I mean, I think we all lost sleep for about a week till it was over and everything, but the logistics, the, uh, the evaluation process, supposedly this is gonna be the best one that they've ever had in twelve years. Also, I wanna give a shout out to Officer Ray Haynes, who was a freaking rock star on the parking, 'cause once again, we never had that many people at that location at that time, and it was just one of those things where it's a perfect storm, we had fire departments, we had rain, we had everything that just blended together, so it, it was behind the, Tom's leadership, it was a great project, great event.
Thank you, Tom, estimated twenty thousand people.
Yeah, twenty thousand people in two days.
Amazing, that's, that is rock. Next is oh-nine-two-three-dash-nine. Mr. Wade Newchris.
Yes, ma'am.
You have five minutes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I was really looking forward to coming tonight, uh, because I wanted to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Keith. They put in three drain piles on our road, uh, they put one up at the top of the curve, so there's like probably, uh, two-thirds of a mile running down hill, and right at the top of the hill, they ran one that runs off into the ditch. Down at the bottom, which was a really big problem, they put one across there, and then they put one way down, you know, almost, uh, in front of, uh, my gate area. So I wanted to come tonight and acknowledge that something was done and that I really appreciate it. However, um, who is James Lee Dixon? That's you, sir?
Me. Okay, unfortunately, yesterday I received a letter from him, and he says that he did some research after me raising an issue of how far the county road goes, and he says it's four tenths of a mile, okay? That was an issue over twenty years ago, okay? My road, the road in front of my gate was caving into the creek. Before I closed on the property, my realtor looked into what the length of that county road was, and he got with Mr. Teague, and they came down and they fixed that cave-in part, and they acknowledged that the road goes seven tenths of a mile from that intersection. My contention with Mr. Teague's comment that the road ends at the gate is the gate is not seven tenths. That's a property edge marker, okay? That road goes through everybody's property, I just happen to own the end property, okay? For quite some time, rock was not being delivered past the neighbor's, uh, driveway, and so then Mr. Teague had to make a special delivery of larger rock, because my part of the driveway was gone, and then maintaining it with smaller rock. So now, all of a sudden, after twenty years, I'm told by somebody that the road is not seven tenths, it's four tenths. I would like to see that documentation. One issue I raised last, last, uh, month was, uh, Tennessee Code Fifty-four Ten, one of three states that the county legislative bodies classify the public roads, and they shall be entered of record in the office of the county clerk in a book to be kept for that purpose. I checked the county clerk's office, they don't have a book that designates what Pine Grove Road is. I wanna see that book. There is probably something in the description of that that I would like to see that says how long that is. Now I will review my closing documents and the records that I have, but I remember specifically seeing a map that showed that road, and it annotated seven tenths from the intersection of the, of the state highway of four fifteen all the way down, and it showed the road drawing to where the original matriarch's house was on that property. That entire, uh, collar was owned by one family, and that road went, went all the way to the original matriarch's house, and that's the way the county road was drawn on the map that I saw that said it was seven tenths. So I will try to show my documentation that it's seven tenths. But I would like to see, number one, this book, I don't know if it's kept at the, at the highway department, but it says it's supposed to be in the, uh, in the county clerk's office that designates that. And so we should be able to look at that and see what that is, and see how it designates the road, you know, I haven't seen what it is. But other than that, I really appreciate what was done, I'm just kinda taken by surprise, we're all of a sudden now, we're cutting the county road length in half to something that was disputed over twenty years ago, um, and, uh, we'd like to try to get that straightened out. And then my only request would be, is that maybe we could, uh, define the ditches a little bit better, so the water would flow a little bit better. But, uh, I, again, I appreciate the effort that was taken and the work that was done, 'cause it's really, really great. He's paved over the park, looks really, really good, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Monroe County Standing and Committees, and this is submitted by, uh, Mayor Ingram for the year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll come in for you.
Second.
Craig Miller, motion, second, Travis Wade.
Question?
Go ahead.
On the committees, there was, just one I had a question with, you have a personnel committee or that, that committee there? Um, there's not a commission representative on there, and as I read statute, there allows for one to be on there.
Absolutely.
And so I would like to see that amended in the future to include somebody, not me per se, but somebody from this commission to be on that committee as well.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?